At this time, I'd call the special meeting of the President and Board of Trustees for the Village of Tinley Park to order. The record reflected it's Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, and the clock in the Council Chamber says 6:17 PM. Can we have a roll call?
Trustee Yonker, trustee Panito.
Here.
Trustee Burr.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Blatz.
Present.
Trustee Mangan.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
Present. Thank you. Item number one, motion to open a public hearing. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. We conduct the public hearing on the proposed 2019 fiscal year budget. Trustee Mangan, fire away.
Okay. In accordance with the state statutes, a notice of public hearing was published in the newspaper on Sunday, March 25th, 2018, and the proposed budget has been available for public inspection at the village clerk's office since Tuesday, March 27th, 2018. So we're going to open a public hearing. I'm going to have Dave, he'll start the process, and then he'll give it over to Brad.
Thank you, trustee Mangan. First of all, I just want to talk a little bit about our process. The budget process, while you're seeing the end product, and for those of you who went to some of our meetings, heard what went into it, this is actually a very extensive process that started last fall. What we've been doing the last couple of years is we've really been starting the process by updating our strategic plan. And so the staff spent some time at a mini-retreat in town last November discussing some of the things that should be changed in the strategic plan, some of the priorities. The board gave their input at a meeting in December, and we used a lot of that information to help develop the budgets. So all the department heads with their staff then prepared all the budgets. The finance department worked with them in terms of developing the final budget, and we had meetings with myself, Brad, trustee Mangan, Pat Carr, and other staff members. We reviewed all departments individually in February. So a lot of work went into that, and I do want to thank, again, Brad and his team especially, but all the staff and the elected officials who put time and energy into really one of the most important things we do every year. So at the last meeting, there was discussion about a number of changes to the staff-recommended budget, and I did get some additional feedback afterwards, so I wanted to spend a little bit of time going through the changes that were made from the draft budget, which you saw a few weeks ago. So in the expenditure category, we did add two new police officers, and this was in addition to the two officers that were already in the budget, and in addition to the other five that we are going to be hiring that were already in the budget, for really a total of nine officers that will be hired in the next fiscal year. Haven't been around here forever, but I think my understanding, that's probably, easily probably the most dramatic increase in hiring we've had, certainly in police and perhaps any other department. It's a, it will be a challenge, which with our process, our service process, but we've already started that and are beginning to get some of them on board. We also added in software for Public Works' timekeeping and overtime, 24,000. We added an additional 10,000 to help Public Works with special event crews, as they've been taxed a lot in the last several years with the addition of a lot of new special events. So there's money in there to hire additional crews that needed for a total of 20,000. The board emphasis, I think a lot of the discussion at the last meeting was starting to really focus on some of our long-neglected capital improvements, and so a couple of things that we did as we added. Maintenance and improvement of Two Ponds, Apple Lane, and Fairfield, which we added $676,000 to the budget. Public Works' part-time clerk was upgraded to full-time. We were able to move funding for the Oak Park playbook programs to various TIFs, except for a small portion of the signage grant, which freed up some money to do some of the other things we just talked about. We added an additional 80,000 for security cameras, and then we added 200,000 for sanitary sewer televising. And as we've talked, that's one of the areas, I think, of concern over the next several years, as we do have aging sanitary sewers. We're starting to spend a lot more money on repairs, and we want to get ahead of the curve here and start to proactively televise and find out where our problem's at by beginning to do more televising. For a lot of this, we did have to make some reductions. There was a vehicle on the police department, 45,000, that we did not need to add in there that was cut. The 179th Street bike path at 450,000 was removed. We're going to move back the hiring of the custodian supervisor from May 1st to November 1st. We reduced fire training, tower repaving by 50,000 from capital. We cut 24,000 in branding, mats from capital. We removed the intern from the manager's office, 19,300. Removed the plow truck from Public Works, 185,000. We removed the Harlem Avenue sprinkler and plantings for 356,000 in savings. Village Hall fountain replacement was cut at 49,000, and finally, Colson Center audio improvements at 139,000. So in a moment, I'm going to turn over the rest of this presentation to Brad to talk about the major capital improvements, as well as a summary of all of our funds. But I did want to make it clear, this budget, I think, did accomplish a lot, but there's a lot that we do need to visit in the future. There was approximately 800,000 in unfilled personnel requests. We still have not determined funding for the second fire station renovation. When the Village Plaza is built, we're going to have to have additional staffing. That still needs to be determined, how we're going to pay for that. And there's a number of other capital improvements that we really need to look at and look at various options to fund that. This year, we'll also be looking at closing out the Oak Park Avenue TIF, and looking at how with the closure of that TIF, we can continue to make the convention center and the hotel on-site financially viable. And we do need to look at our water fund, as there's a number of projects we've had deferred because of a lack of revenues in the last year or two. So I'm going to turn this over to Brad again to talk about the capital, major items, as well as the overall budget.
Thank you, Dave. The village budget, although it's a little difficult to read on the overhead screen, it is, we have, we did also, in addition to having the budget available in the clerk's office for physical inspection, it was also available on the website for review. If you were to look at the online document, page 61 has this summary. The village's operating, the village's total expenditure budget is just shy of 150 million, just shy of 149 million. The library operations is another 7.3 million, for a total budget, expenditure budget of just shy of 156 million dollars. The main operating funds, the general fund, the water and sewer fund, and the commuter parking lot fund, following the village's fiscal policies, all have a, are all a balanced budget, meaning that the revenues equal or exceed the expenditures. Every, each year, we traditionally have done a transfer at the end of the fiscal year of residual revenues over expenses, which is used to fund the capital requirements for the following and subsequent years. As we end fiscal 18, we are expecting to have revenues of about 1.2 million dollars more than what had been budgeted, and expenditures in the general fund will be about 3.5 million dollars less than had been budgeted. Both obviously a good thing. Comparatively, last year, the revenues exceeded the budget by 85,000, and the expenditures were under the budgeted amount by about 4.4 million dollars. For the upcoming fiscal year in the general fund, we are projecting an increase in revenues of about 2 million dollars, and an increase in expenses of about 1 million dollars compared to the current year budgets. In the water and sewer fund, we are expecting to see about a half a million dollars excess of revenues over expense, I'm sorry, excess of revenues over what had been budgeted, and expenditures coming in under the budget by about 700,000. And next fiscal year, the revenues are projected to be about 700,000 dollars more than what is in the current budget, and expenditures about 200,000 dollars more. Some of the key capital items that are in, capital items that are in the new budget, Dave had already mentioned, the four police patrol officers. There's a Public Works maintenance worker in the realm of equipment and rolling stock. There are seven police vehicles being replaced, nine in-car cameras, and two mobile video cameras. There is a street sweeper and a bucket truck being replaced. The village bus is being replaced. A sewer jetter, truck, and an excavator are also being replaced. In information technology, new permitting software is being implemented for community development. There is some replacement of the 911 CAD system, some upgrades, some other equipments and software upgrades throughout the village, computer copier replacements, as well as an agenda management system. We are replacing a couple emergency warning sirens, and we are continuing with the emergency medical dispatch software implementation. Some work at the convention center, as Dave mentioned. Our annual street projects includes pavement, our ongoing pavement management program, as well as a major project of reconstructing Oak Park Avenue between 167th Street and 159th Street. Some sanitary sewer projects includes replacement or lining of a portion of the 167th Street Force Main, some repairs to the sanitary sewer at 175th and Ridgeland, as well as some additional repairs along Ridgeland Avenue line, replacement of a structure and controls at post four, and engineering for post five lift station renovation as well. In municipal buildings, we've got fire station remodeling, security camera installations at main intersections, phone system replacement, police department perimeter fencing, municipal parking lot repairs, replacement of stairwells and railings at 80th Avenue train station, replacement of the illuminated bollards at the Oak Park Avenue station, and commuter parking lot resurfacing. In the area of streets, LED street lighting, we're continuing with the phased process of replacing our streetlights with LED fixtures. Flood control is the completion of the Freedom Pond landscape amenities, as well as Apple Lane Pond and Fairfield Lane Pond restorations. We've got the fountain replacement in downtown Tinley Park. In the area of branding, we've got the master plan is continuing with installation of wayfinding signs, phase one. In the water projects, we've got a new backflow prevention program, and post house, post one pump house, parking lot, and driveway resurfacing. And that concludes my summary. Okay, thanks, Brad. Thanks, Dave. Receive any comments from the public regarding the budget?
I'll come to kick it, broke the fountain, fix it.
Manager, do you have? We did get some money back through the court process for that. I don't remember how much, Chief, do you remember?
10,000. No, I don't know. It was negotiated with this plea agreement.
I believe you guys said it was around 10 grand.
Yep.
You were able to get from the person.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the budget. Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, so thank you, trustee Mangan, and village manager and treasurer, and your staff, thank you very much for the successful budget cycle. Item number two, receive comments from the public. Two opportunities to talk to me before we continue on.
Do you say comments from the public?
Yes, so this is going to be comments from the public regarding our budget cycle.
Oh, regarding the budget only, or just comments?
You can do comments if you're here to talk about the TIF, we're about to start that process.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Okay, no.
We're about to start the TIF here.
Feel free to step forward and make your comment.
Sure, ma'am, if you have a comment, yeah.
I have to adjust some things, because thankfully for the budget, a lot of it was answered. Thank you very much. I voted, so it's going to be more of a complaint, and you guys need to hear this. I voted for some of you to take these states, because I talked with other citizens and asked questions. I can honestly say, Mr. Vandenberg, you were my worst fear of the bunch, but after promising transparency, no more background deals, your doors always open, open forums like town hall meetings, you got my vote. Like many others, I feel duped. Your campaign promise of transparency has really yet to be met. In response to Mr. Mangan a couple of weeks ago blaming a certain trustee, I mean, this is childish. You know, you didn't run, but you were asked. You chose to take the position with others who ran on a campaign insisting they would not take these benefits. You accepted a job less than 24, five hours a week, in which any working environment would not qualify for benefits. You did this, you were found out, and you tried shaming another trustee for your decision. I've spoken to random citizens on the southwest side of Tinley Park. I can't find one citizen that feels reliable for your insurance needs. The frequent comment was, unfortunately, oh, hell no. Along with these other citizens, I've talked with my neighborhood, we ask to be canceled and paid back in full. Every job has its perks, never should it be at our expense. That's just not fair. The words you speak when you're in your seat are recorded up there, you all know that. So when you sit there and say, "I never said that," when it's on tape, we've all heard it. You really, you know, you speak, you're tired of hearing it, and things need to change. You're right, things need to change for us. That's why we voted you guys in, for us. The way you continue to roll your eyes at citizens that voted for you, you ignore us when we speak, it's demeaning. We didn't vote this type of behavior towards citizens. We want our town back. There have been comments that I personally feel are inappropriate. I agree with you guys, there are things that are out of control. Constantly putting some of you down, no merit. I've been waiting to give benefit of the doubt. You're not asking citizens what we want. You seem to be making decisions without actually listening, listening, comprehending what we're asking you to do. When I hear you guys accuse others of sharing information with citizens, that's what you're supposed to do, that's what you said you would do, that's part of transparency. Ask the citizens, that's why you were elected. Mental health care facility scares me. With all the studies and all the consulting you're doing, does anybody realize, anybody know how many kids in Tinley Park have cancer? Teenagers, unknown cancer coming up? The rumored hazardous chemicals leaking from the grounds? The grounds where these kids, your children, practice sports on a regular basis, and they're ending up with cancer in high school? Teenagers sneak in and hang out there, and when they get caught, the cops just go on. What they do is they walk around the building and go somewhere else. I've heard this from other parents' kids, and they're not in Tinley, they are in Orland, I'll give you that much. In my opinion, as well as quite a few households in Tinley Park, you guys have two choices. You've got to start listening to us, you've got to start voting with us. Listen to us, comprehend what we're saying, or find a comfy chair at home. You know, we're praying to God he doesn't let you do too much damage to our town before the next election. For the few of you up there that are trying to hold your promises, I thank you so much. Please keep trying, we believe in you, we want to believe in all of you. Thanks.
Mr. Mangan, is there any consideration maybe for putting more detail out on the village's new website for financials, making it even easier and more transparent, especially when it comes to TIFs? I know the information's out there, I know where I can find it, I can pull it all together. I want to see details. I see all the money in the budget, which I'm glad that you're going to put money into your computer systems, PDFs. We should be able to see every expense out of a TIF, who it went to, and the backup that came with it, because I shouldn't have to FOIA that, and I will, every single expense if I have to, but that cost is a FOIA then. Just put it out there. We've asked previous boards about Excel, allowing us, and I understand it would be uncontrolled information at that point, but being able to download information into Excel, so the few people that may want to look at it could, because some of it is just, we've lost trust, obviously, from a lot of comments. We've lost trust in you guys, in general, over a lot of things that have happened. So we're going to continue to dig, but you know, sometimes it's just seeing it, and then it's, if it's out there, it's transparent, well, you know, for me, I'm good then, I've looked into it, I feel better about it. But this digging and having to dig through stuff and ask questions, and then I can't ask questions directly, I got to put it in the FOIA, and then that comes at a cost to all of us, and I'm tired of that. In this day and age, you're putting the money into all these computers, 120 grand, I think I saw, salaries for new computer people, it's time that we get the data, like everybody else sees, you know, now out there. How do you feel about maybe putting more?
I think we can look at that, yes.
Diane, I previously spoke with you and gave you all of the account codes for the TIFs.
And I did.
And we have all of the pay registers, accounts payable registers are online, and all of that detail is in there.
So I can, every, every twice a month, every, I can look at your vendor report and sit there and track all the spending? I know I can do that. Why should I have to do that? I want to know every spend, every penny that gets spent out of a TIF, and I promise you, going forward, every single expense I will be asking about, if it's not out there in detail for me to look at myself. I want to see that you're collecting the invoices, or whatever you're doing, to make sure people are doing the right things. We waste a lot of money. We're replacing, what, cement all over, how much money did we waste on hiring somebody that obviously wasn't qualified, that we have to spend so much money to fix the train station now? We've got to start learning from our mistakes, we have to. And I am going to watch every single thing that's being done out of these TIFs, that's our money, that instead of going to the police officers that we're begging for, you're giving out incentives, and I promise you, half of me is happy you're doing something to incent, you know, do that. But the other side of me is going to be watching every single thing you're doing with this money. Who's getting it, who's involved in it, we will know. Either you guys can put it out there, or I promise, we will get it through spending money and put it out there ourselves, but we will get it. It's time that you start being transparent.
I will follow up with you.
Yeah, and it's a simple, Brad, there was a software issue, that's why it wasn't downloadable to Excel programs, I remember that being a conversation a couple of years ago.
It's not a requirement of the government to do it.
Right. And I believe the PDFs that are put on the website should be word-searchable, and if they are word-searchable, they can be exported into a spreadsheet.
You can spend 18 hours doing something, or you could put it out there, and I can do it in about 10 minutes, okay?
I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Just a quick question, I know all the account payables are on the site for all the vendor reports and all the checks that are written every month. Is there accounts receivable listed on the site as well? On our website?
No.
Is there any reason why? I'm just curious as to what the outstanding bills may be, whether it be traffic tickets or code violations, contractor fee, whatever it is. I'm just, again, like Diane said, I would prefer not to.
We're working on that, we're actually, probably sometime in the next 60 days, we'll actually be discussing that at a finance committee meeting.
About putting it on the website, as far as?
About basically the outstanding, you're asking about outstanding accounts payable.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
We're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. There is no other comments, it asks for a motion to adjourn our special board meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. This time, I'd like to call the special meeting of the President and Board of Trustees to order. The record reflected it's 6:43 PM. We've already called the roll, do we need to move on? Can you call a roll, please?
Trustee Yonker, trustee Panito.
Here.
Trustee Burr.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Blatz.
He's at the bathroom.
Trustee Mangan.
Here.
Then President Vandenberg.
Here, thank you. This time, I'd ask for a motion to open a public hearing. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Panito, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Counselor Conley, would you like to start us off this evening?
Yeah, I'll get us going, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are here for a TIF public hearing. This is a statutorily required meeting. The purpose of this hearing is to discuss the proposed new Bremen Tax Increment Finance District. Tonight, you're going to hear a presentation from some of our staff members, and also one of our consultants from Ellers, they'll walk you through the entire TIF process we've gone through. Before I kick it over to them, I do see some familiar faces, this is the second public hearing that we've had, I know many of you were here for our first one, that was also statutorily required. The net was a little larger this time of notice that we had to send out, so thanks to everybody for coming tonight. So this is the public hearing portion, you'll hear a little bit from the mayor, and then we'll dive right into our presentation, which I'm sure will be up on the screens for everybody to see. So thank you to everybody for coming out tonight.
Counselor? Yes, I do have a statement to read prior to continuing on with our public hearing. So I, as mayor, Jacob Vandenberg, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing to discuss the proposed new Bremen TIF redevelopment plan and project. This public hearing is being held pursuant to 65 ILCS 511 74.405, pardon me, of the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, to discuss the new, proposed new Bremen TIF district. This hearing will include a detailed presentation of the proposed new Bremen TIF district redevelopment plan and project, and a discussion of the financing associated with the redevelopment plan and the project. Following these presentations, all interested parties will be given the opportunity to be heard through public comment. At the conclusion of public comment portion of this hearing, the Honorable Village Board may determine to either adjourn or continue this hearing until a later date. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Economic Development Manager, Patrick Coben.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, I'm Patrick Coben, I'm the Economic Development Manager for the Village of Tinley Park. The goal of economic development is to try to develop our scarce resources here in town, and as you might imagine, it's a little bit difficult here in Illinois and in Cook County. Recently, one of our most popular incentives is reclassifications, or class sixes, sevens, and eights, and they have a challenge now, they've been amended, that requires it to have prevailing wage attached to it, and Cook County's minimum wage for anyone that works inside an establishment that uses it. The reason I bring that up is because it's limiting The reason I bring that up is because it's limiting our tools to actually attract development in Tinley Park. So tonight, we're going to talk about TIF, which is one of our tools, and really, what we have here is a tale of two TIFs. Now, the North TIF that you see, that's in the pink-purple color, and then the Main Street South, which is in the blue. Main Street South is a TIF that's currently in place, that we're just trying to replace. It's really a tale of two TIFs, as I said, the North Street TIF, Main Street North, has had some pretty nice developments, where on the South side, not so much. You'll see a lot of blighted areas, we actually did have a recent demolition going on there, but the TIF itself did not really do exactly what we wanted it to do, because when the recession hit, the EAV in the area actually declined, it went the wrong way. Normally in a TIF, what you want to see happen is have development take place on some of this vacant land, which would create an increment, which we could put back into that area. But unfortunately, for about seven years, from 2009 to 2015, it actually declined, so there wasn't any money that we could put back into the TIF itself. What we're wanting to do with this, and why it's so important, is we've got a lot of plans for downtown. It was one of the challenges that the mayor had brought up whenever he came on, was like, how do we breathe life back into downtown? A lot of our downtown businesses are struggling, and if we could reset this TIF, it would give us an opportunity to basically restart it, and hopefully create some increment, especially if you think about Central Middle School, that's a big vacant site. If a building takes place there, any increment that is on top of that would be able to be reinvested in things like Harmony Square, also Oak Park Playbook, which is an incentive program we're trying to put forward to fill up some of the other vacancies, and then also just any future development in general. We brought this up March 1st at our JRB meeting, and I want to just point out that it was unanimously supported by the Village of Tinley Park, the Tinley Park Park District, Community Consolidated School District 146, and Bremen High School. So there's a lot of support behind this to take place, because anyone that drives down Oak Park Avenue can see, there's just too many vacancies. So we really need to have a tool that can help us out. Now, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to our consultant from Ellers, Maureen, to get a little bit more background.
If you could use the podium for your presentation, it's probably best heard for everyone.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As Patrick said, I'm Maureen Berry with Ellers and Associates, we've been working with the village for several years now, as a TIF consultant. So one of the things that you have to do prior to creating a new TIF is to do an eligibility study to make sure that the area that is being studied meets the eligibility criteria set forth by the state of Illinois, and the other requirements that are established before you can do that. So just to kind of give a little bit more background, Patrick's covered a little bit of this already, the Main Street South TIF district, which has very similar boundaries to what we're proposing to replace with the new Bremen TIF, was adopted in 2003, and it's been amended a couple of times. It was scheduled to terminate in 2026, but rather than allow, waiting for that to happen, the village, as Patrick said, this TIF has been, it's had some successes, but it's not really working the way that the village would expect it to, in terms of generating increment that will help to fund the projects that the village would like to accomplish. So, you know, the best way to deal with that at this point is to dissolve the TIF that's currently in place and start over with a new one. This allows us to reset that base EAV, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. There really aren't any changes, however, between the, what was planned in the current TIF in terms of redevelopment activities and the new Bremen TIF. So the people who are living in, or have a business within the Main Street South TIF, and then will also be in the new Bremen TIF when that kind of changes hands, they should not notice any difference whatsoever. I'll talk more about the EAV issue there in just a minute. If you, let's see, move on to the next, what am I pointing at? There we go. All right, so this is just to illustrate, this is the Main Street South TIF, and I'm going to quickly flip to the next slide, which is the new TIF, the new Bremen TIF, so you can really kind of tell there really isn't much difference. The new Bremen TIF does have some additional parcels, but for the most part, it's pretty similar. Going back to the previous slide, we did have some successes in the Main Street South TIF, so it was working, we were able to make some improvements along Oak Park Avenue, there were some infrastructure improvements made by the village, and one of the biggest successes was the former Central Middle School building had some pretty significant environmental hazards that were able to be addressed using TIF funds. So the village, I know that we worked with them, I want to say, back in 2007 and '08, the village had some pretty major projects on the table, but then the recession came along, and those projects disappeared. And so it took quite a long time, not just here in Tinley Park, but throughout the state of Illinois, and then the country for that matter, for the recession to really kind of come to an end, and for developers to come back to the village with some plans. So they have heard from some of those places, but at this point, with the 2026 planned end to the TIF, there just isn't enough time to allow the developers to get the increment they need from the current TIF in order to make the project successful. So again, we go back to the replacement. And the other thing that's happened in the meantime is that the village has adopted a legacy plan in 2009, which is, it's a fantastic plan, it really augments the comprehensive plan that the village has, and has some very specific ideas for how to make your downtown thriving, and you know, the kind of place that makes everybody in Tinley Park excited to live here and be a part of. However, that's going to require some funding, to be able to do, make some of the infrastructure improvements, and to be able to facilitate partnerships with the private sector in order to make that plan a reality. So going back to where we're talking about here again, essentially, the north boundary goes to 172nd Street, on the south, 179th Street, on the east side, 67th Avenue and 67th Court, and 69th Avenue on the west side. So we're looking at 89 acres, 273 parcels, the same uses as in the Main Street South TIF, so we have commercial, residential, some government and institutional, some mixed use, a few railroad parcels, and then rights of way. There's a change, I think you have in front of you, or will have soon, a revised copy of the redevelopment plan. It's considered a draft at the beginning of the process, we did have a citizen come forward who had been left out of the, the village had agreed to leave them out of the last TIF, and so we mistakenly put them into this one, so we removed those two parcels. And so essentially, what you have in front of you is a revised draft, which is just, essentially, the only changes are removing those two parcels, so that required changes in numbers of parcels and so forth, and the percentages in our eligibility, and then the maps, and legal description. Okay, what are we talking about when we talk about TIF? I know some of you have, are asking that question, many of you have been to these presentations before. Essentially, TIF is a tool for helping to incentivize and jumpstart redevelopment in areas that are already developed, okay? So when we use TIF, generally, we're not using that in places that are vacant parcels that are very easy to develop. Generally, we are talking about redeveloped areas, and downtown, old downtowns are, you know, are kind of the prime areas that we're looking at when we talk about TIFs. They're areas that already have had some development, but it's starting to get a little old, and there's some deterioration, we see some obsolescence of uses, and that's, that happens as areas age. So you've got some buildings in the area that are, you know, getting close to 80, 90, 100 years old, and so they're even 40 and 50, they start to not be as useful as they were when they were originally built, and they need to either be redeveloped, or you know, start over again, in order to make them useful to their inhabitants. So basically, TIF is, it allows you to create a funding stream to be able to make improvements, such as infrastructure, new roads, sewers and water mains, and to allow the village, this area, to be on kind of a similar playing field as an undeveloped area. The village also has, you know, kind of an additional issue to deal with here in terms of being in Cook County, and part of the village is in Cook County, and this TIF is, and part of it is not, and I think that also kind of creates some issues in terms of being able to attract businesses. And so TIF is another incentive that allows the village to be able to try to compete in terms of attracting businesses there. One of the most important things about TIF is what it is not, which is not, it is not a tax increase, that's kind of one of the misunderstood pieces of it. Essentially, what it is, is the difference between the amount of property tax revenue generated before a TIF district is established, and the amount of property tax revenue generated after the TIF district has new development. So once you establish that base EAV, I'm going to move to the next slide here, the base EAV is represented in this graphic by the yellow square there, so you can see, towards the left side of the screen shows you kind of what happens at the beginning. So you establish that base EAV, and that is the part, the portion, the yellow square is the portion that will continue to go to all of the taxing bodies, okay? So there will still be money going to the village, the school districts, the park district, Cook County, all of the taxing bodies that are now receiving a share of property tax increment, or property taxes from this area, the parcels in this area will continue to receive that portion. Ideally, as you put some money, both private and public, into the parcels in this TIF, and see property tax growth from improvements, which is represented by this, the green triangle, as you see a growth in EAV, that's the portion that goes into the TIF fund, and then the village can use that to incentivize businesses. And then after the TIF expires there, where the red line is along the right side, the blue part that's left over is what goes to all of the taxing bodies after the TIF expires. So, but you don't get that big growth without some investment by both the public and the private sector. So again, we try to use that green incremental EAV to stimulate that growth, okay? I know, that's a complicated concept, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. How do we establish a TIF? As I said, we need to identify the area that has some physical and economic challenges. We prepared the eligibility report and redevelopment plan, which is this document you have in front of you, it's also on the village's website, and it's been there since the plan was filed in early January. We had a public information meeting that was noticed to residents within the TIF and people within 750 feet outside of it. We had a joint review board meeting on March 1st, where representatives from the impacted taxing bodies were there and had the opportunity to hear the village's plans for this area, and review the eligibility report and comment on that. At that meeting, the members of the taxing district voted unanimously, as Patrick said, to recommend to the village board that this TIF be adopted. So we're at the public hearing stage tonight, after comments by the public are heard, the village will then have the opportunity to vote on the TIF ordinances, this says April 17th, I believe that's now going to be two weeks later, and then essentially, that would put the TIF in place. So this is the proposed process at this point, okay? The TIF would be in effect for 23 years, and could be terminated earlier if the village achieves its expectations and goals before that point, and has all of its debts paid, if there are any. Okay, so how did this area qualify, just very briefly? There's three different types of categories you can qualify a TIF under. The TIF that was originally established, the Main Street South TIF, qualified as a blighted area. We have made some progress in the area, however, since then, and so now that the TIF didn't quite meet that higher standard, it's now qualifying as a conservation area. So we only were able to find, we found fewer criteria that apply to the area. However, the area has aged since then, so now we're able to say that the 50% or more of the buildings are over 35 years of age. Conservation area criteria, these are terms, again, they're defined within the state statute, they may be different than what you think of when you think of these terms, so you know, bear that in mind. These are criteria that are common, and again, in downtown areas, not just in Tinley Park, but throughout the country. I think you'd be hard pressed to find an older downtown that's been developed for longer than 60 or 70 years, as portions of Tinley Park are, that wouldn't meet these criteria. So the bar is not meant to be so high that you can't get over it, okay? When the state established these criteria, they would like to see the village be able to use this tool. So it does apply. We have a redevelopment plan that sets forth what the village would intend to do in a very general kind of way. So it's got some goals and objectives that guide the decisions that the village would make for implementing the TIF plan, it outlines some activities and financing techniques, it sets a maximum limit of expenditures that the TIF cannot exceed, or would have to go through another amendment process, which is very similar to this kind of adoption process. Because the cost is, it's limited to certain costs, you cannot use TIF money for new buildings, you can use them for renovations, you can use it for infrastructure, demolition, or site preparation, those are the kind of things TIF money should be used for. It can't be used for equipment, so you're not going to be able to give TIF funds to a company to buy copy machines or a new kitchen sink. So anyway, those are, these are the kind of items that are set forth in there, and there's some certifications and findings in there, too. One of those findings is that the village does not intend to displace 10 or more people, that's just the number that's required by the statute, it doesn't mean that they're actually intending to displace anybody, but that's one of the certifications. Okay, so that's the point I just made there. Key findings of the plan are that conservation area factors, which, as I said, this area is a conservation area, they're reasonably present and distributed throughout the redevelopment project area. Costs to redevelop this area are extraordinary, and that's one of the reasons the area qualifies as a TIF. And we can only spend TIF funds on projects, on properties that are within the boundaries of this TIF. The area as a whole has not been subject to growth and development through private enterprise, and would not be reasonably anticipated to redevelop without TIF, and in fact, I think the growth that we did see within the Main Street South TIF happened because it wasn't a TIF, so that's the reason, we think that was, you know, gave the village the potential to be successful, and we think we need to continue using this tool. All of the findings within the TIF plan are consistent with what is already in the village's comprehensive plan, we're not proposing anything new or different, and again, we won't be displacing any residents. So it does pass the but-for test, which is without essentially kind of the overall test that you have to apply to an area for a TIF, without but, or but for having this TIF, we don't expect to see any real significant improvement in this area. So that's my probably a little too long-winded explanation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That was a great explanation, thank you.
Okay.
This time, we're at number D, letter D, of our agenda this evening for public comment. Yield the floor to the unofficial mayor of Oak Park Avenue.
Yeah, I want to get into that, don't mind. Your honor. Yeah, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, if you don't know who I am, my name is Jim Fuentes. I'm very proud that I started the Oak Park Avenue Main Street Association, which has been around for almost 20 years, that some of you people in the room don't know me that much, but I know you, which created all your parades, your benches on the avenue, all your involvement. Our objective was to create a perpetual marketing plan to bring people to the downtown, so the businesses could survive. From 1996, where we seen many unfortunate buildings, and Mayor Zabrocki and the other mayors can testify to this, that we know in this town who love, we love Tinley, everybody in this room loves Tinley. to this, that we know in this town who love, we love Tinley. Everybody in this room loves Tinley. And that's why we're here, because we love this town and we wanna see it improve. Well, as we've gone through this process, in 1996, I offered a TIF to the mayor, Mayor Zabrocki and Pat Ray. You know what they told me? "We can't TIF the downtown." That's right. Ironically, two years later, they found out they could TIF. By the way, the first TIF was Manny Hoffman, former mayor of Homewood, personal friend of mine, State Farm agent, believe it or not, as I am as well. Anyway, he's very proud of that fact. So first of all, real quickly, I wanna thank the trustees in this room for their hard work and their service to our community. It's a lot of hard work for you guys to be in the dais, including our mayor. And some of the stuff that they've gone through, they've inherited. They didn't want it, it inherited it in their situation. So remember that when you talk about our community. We need positiveness in this town. We need this town to look forward, not backwards. So by including the TIF, I specifically say, "If you're not pro-TIF, you're not pro-growth." Remember that. I'll say it again. You want a dais. If you're not pro-TIF, you're not pro-growth. Because our town needs this TIF. The reason we need it is because, if you're like me, I've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes. Hundreds of thousands. Cause I own, my money's where my mouth's at. It's on that street. I love Tinley. But I've been over-regulated, over-sprinkled, over you name it, by our village folks. So we need to work on that book. So besides that, if you bought a Cracker Barrel and you had it in Mattson, your tax bill would be, let's say, $100,000. Same Cracker Barrel, R.A. Third, right behind the, the, the gas station, you got it, same Cracker Barrel, $25,000. We have a 75,000, 75% differential between Cook and Will County. It's not a level playing field. It's brutal. That's why you look up and down Oak Park Avenue and you see the things that exist in our town. We've gotta change that. So by the TIF, first of all, we need some wins. We need to build our infrastructure, you guys, and we need to get density. Density, because we cannot compete. If you go and look at anything around train sta, train stations, the TODs, Transmurray and Developments, it's unfortunate, but we have to go up. We have to go north. If you wanna play for, pay for your police department, you wanna pay for those new fire department people, anybody in this town, we need income. We need revenue. You need to have it through building Tinley Park, especially if you live on the east side. Your values of your property, folks, right now is a time, the economic engine's beginning to grow. Let's take advantage of it. You want your values to go up, not down. This is gonna help us. So, make sure you're on, on top of that. Our objective also is to continue to reinvest in our branding. And we need to reinvent Tinley Park. Like any great company, you need to reinvent yourself. So that's what we're doing with the branding, right, Donna? We're reinventing our community. We're known as the town of music. Wait, we're gonna really get this thing going. We're gonna build that plaza. People are gonna come from everywhere. They're gonna love it and say, and want to stay in Tinley Park. Spend money. Don't let them go out of the community. Keep them in town. Give them a reason to spend money with those beautiful new buildings. And all the new taxes, they're gonna offset your taxes, mine. Keep them low, okay? By developing the downtown. Also, it's already gonna be May the 1st. You guys been in office a year. We need to get some wins. We need to get this town rolling. So by getting the development going, hopefully you can tell us, "Hey, we know the Bangin', or Bang Gallo's gonna get going right over here, gentlemen." Right? We also know that all these other projects on the east side of town hopefully get going. You talk about blighted? Go, go look behind T-Hans. Go look over there. To me, it's blighted, nothing derogatory against Alers. It's nasty over there. And it needs to be changed and leveled and get going as soon as possible. I know everybody in this room cares. And I know that we're all working for the same objective. But Tinley Park needs also to be merchant-friendly. You know what merchant-friendly means? When they come to you, Paula, "Are you over here, mister Broner?" They need to work with them so we can get these developments going. So by having merchant-friendly, it means we're open for business. The TIF means we're open for business. So either you're pro-TIF or no TIF. Either you're pro-business or not. Either you're pro-growth or you're not. And every one of you folks in this room are gonna get a chance to bid on it. So I appreciate your time. I thank you for everything. And I thank you for loving Tinley, cause I do as well. God bless you and let's get it done in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
My name is Rudy Visser. I'm here representing the Viking Lodge. I'm not a resident of Tinley, but I'm here to represent the Viking Lodge, former post office in Tinley Park. And we are within the TIF district. I looked at the ALER report and I think it's very thorough and very complete. I'm a TIF consultant. I've done about 200-plus TIF projects or more in my life. I've worked for two consultants, one of which wrote the book and the rules for the state of Illinois regarding TIF and how it should work. The definitions and eligibility and all that stuff. So I think I, I think I know a little bit about TIF. Looking at the report, they call it a conservation area, which is a lot, sounds nicer than a blighted area. And the factors necessary are less. But looking at the report, they only come up with five factors, which is the requirement. I think there are more factors here. I think they kinda went light on their so-called findings. I think there's some more, maybe not to a major extent or reasonably distributed, but they're still there, which would support the findings overall. But I think, I think they did a good job. And I worked with Beth Rule, and they may sound familiar to some of the ALER people, and Lisa Lyon. After I retired, they called me and said, "Hey, we need your help." And looking at some areas, cause I worked in the city of Chicago and suburbs and even communities in the Midwest doing TIF. I have wrote, I've written about 200 of these reports in my lifetime. I'm retired now. I'm not looking for any work, but, you know, sometimes I get a call from people that I used to work with, "Hey, we need your, we need your help out here." And most of them have gone to school on me, learning about building conditions, planning issues and the like. But I don't wanna be taking up too much of your time. But I think ALERS has done a good job in looking at the core, Oak Park corridor. And I think TIF is the only tool in town. So many communities are using it because they got troubled areas. Doesn't matter whether it's a shopping center or commercial corridor or even residential neighborhoods. It's the only game in town because urban renewal, where I was involved with in the 60s, is gone. And TIF is the only tool that a community has to make improvements. And I think it's the best thing around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Court, Trustees, Staff, first I wanna thank you for looking at economic development tools to help improve the life of not just the business community, but the residents as well. I live at 1724566th Court and it's right outside of the TIF district, the new area. The only thing that I ask is that you look at two things. One, that any of the storm sewer infrastructure facilities that exist in the area that are not covered by any adjoining TIF be included in this new TIF. Because the storm sewer treatments that we need in our communities provide relief from, obviously, water in high raining periods for not only the businesses, but the residents as well. And it, it treats everybody fairly and equally. And it certainly would be a qualified inclusion in case there were any expenses down the road that would need to be spent in the area of stormwater control. And lastly, for the people who live around there, certainly I would volunteer to be involved with any of the planning as the development continues on, so that you get a voice from the residential community that's right nearby there, because this is adjacent to the property that you're considering as a TIF. And that's all I have as a resident. As a member of the Board at South Suburban College, which I have been for a number of years, over 20 years, I would like to throw the support of South Suburban College toward this TIF as we have for many TIFs for the last 15, 20 years. There used to be a feeling that the TIF district took money away from development and residence. And we who have been involved in this for a long time realize, just as Mr. Visser said, it's the only tool that we have left in developing and, and providing opportunities for business growth oftentimes. And I certainly support it on, as a trustee of South Suburban College and on behalf of the Community College District 510, we support it totally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I'm not sure if you wanna be timing us or not. There's...
You're not being timed.
Okay, that's fine. My name is Martin Tuie. I live at 6719 West 174th Place. And I find this fascinating because I was involved and attended the meetings back in 2002 when the original South Main Street TIF district was established. And then in 2006, 2007, when it was attempted to be expanded. First off, a lot of the vacant lands that were shown in the slide presentation by ALERS, which actually did the previous presentations in 2002, 2006, those are lands owned by property owners who were land speculators, who were looking to make a buck in our neighborhood through absentee ownership. They include Mr. Hanson, who, of Hanson Development. It was called Market Square Development at one point. In 2006, all those properties had tax-producing structures on them, either as residences or as businesses. So for example, across the street from the train station, there was a breakfast restaurant in a building that was built in the 1850s that was not only producing taxes, but creating and generating revenue. There was, there were two houses next door that were being rented out. Ironically, one of them at the time, according to county treasurer reports, was being listed as a homestead exemption for somebody named Joe Rizza. The Joe Rizza. All the, what I'm hearing, having seen this go on over time, is that supposedly there's only one tool, the use of tax increment financing, and that there's nothing else we can do. That's patently not true. The other thing is that the blighted conditions, in some instances, were actually created by the people who were involved very closely in the TIF district previously. Mr. Hanson was one of them. The Tians were involved in that very clearly. They were involved also in a lot of real estate partnerships, of which Mr. Fuentes was very closely involved, that eventually...
Not true. You can look at, legally, it's not true.
Okay.
I have an argument. Get your information correct. One, one gentleman, one at a time.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Well, what I would, that's fine. What we can all do is look at Mr. Fuentes as, as a litigant with the Legit Tinley Park back in the late 2000s, from some of the, some of the business dealings that were going on with White and Company, W.I.G.H.T., which was a consulting firm. There are other options that we can do. First off, if we have to actually dissolve a TIF district to create a new TIF district because people weren't investing because there was a real estate bubble at the time, then maybe the projects to start with were not financially viable. And if the only people who can do business in our downtown area with real estate are those who can't do something without the government subsidizing them, then we've got a really, a fundamental problem with the way we do business. Because I've been subsidizing them for years. If you look at the lifetime of a normal TIF district, 23 years, and you estimate that over year, year after year, say there's a 3% cost increase for the cost of doing business, let's say for a school district, at the end of that 23 years with that 3% increase, but a fixed amount for tax money coming to them, they're only getting roughly 46% of what they were at the beginning of that 23-year period. That'd be like if for 23 years, your pay was frozen, but your cost of living increased every year at 3%. So those taxing bodies, it's, it's, on the surface, yes, it's true that they do not increase your taxes, but it forces those taxing bodies to seek taxes somewhere else, or to seek the money somewhere else, because the balloon is being squeezed at that point. And so it becomes sort of a creative financing shell game. And how do they do it? You know, and that's the problem that a lot of organizations really haven't solved. So when you say on the surface that it doesn't increase your taxes, yes, on the surface, that's true. Realistically, it's gonna squeeze these organizations over time. It's gonna squeeze them more now because by dissolving the South Main Street Tax District, Tax Increment Financing District and creating a new one, you're essentially getting a do-over. If you looked at the buildings that were considered successes in the North Main Street TIF district, those have been vacant since the time they were created. If you, those of us who've lived in the area have seen Cardinal Fitness in there at the beginning of one of the buildings. Cardinal Fitness left after a year or so. It's been vacant ever since then. So, the other building has had a stream of small businesses come and go through them. Some of that may be just the cycle of small businesses. And, you know, we can't make people have a good business plan. And sometimes even good business plans fail. But the fundamental concept was invalid. And, and so I'd have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Fuentes when he says that we have to go upwards. There are other alternatives. And one of them is frankly proposed by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. They've actually published a book from the person who's their community development officer on, "Here are the things that I, community development officer, have seen work in communities nationwide. And here's the mistakes that people have made." They've actually published a game plan for, "Here's how communities can use their natural resources to develop." Now, we've already kind of destroyed some of our natural resources in our downtown area because in 2006, we had all these structures and these places that were producing taxes, tax increment, tax revenue. And they also were businesses or residences. All those speculators who were involved in trying to build large six, seven-story condos, they now have been taking the tax break on having vacant land for all these years. All of us who live here, we don't get that break. Instead, we have to come up with the money to pay for those taxes, to subsidize people like Mr. Hanson, because he gets it, whether he wins or whether he loses, he gets money out of the deal. He gets money out of the deal. I bet that he would even have, I, I learned about this last week from somebody, a WBEZ reporter. Some of these folks even have insurance against vacancy. They have insurance policies if their properties are vacant or if their land is vacant. Now, what I would suggest very strongly, because these are different board members than we had to go to head-to-head with about 10, 12 years ago, we need to look at alternatives rather than saying that tax increment financing is the only thing to do. And, you know, one of the alternatives is frankly looking at what has been a success elsewhere rather than, "Hey, we failed at this because there was a recession and people couldn't get financing, so we're gonna try it again." Because of course, there won't be another recession. And now their plans are sustainable because we're gonna be subsidizing them. I would hope that we would take that... I would hope that we would take that alternative approach and look also at the fact that the factors that are being cited as blight now were actually created by the people who were taking advantage of the same program 10, 12 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, real quickly, my name was invoked. No, real quickly, my name was invoked. It was an arms-length agreement between myself and the last group of builders in the downtown, just to let you know that. So just for the record, check that, too.
I told you, Ted. Oh, it's bad. No, I was ignored. They threw me in the...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's enough. Thank you.
Can I just talk from here really loudly, so I don't have to make everybody move?
By all means.
Thank you. You know, I'm very involved in wanting to develop the downtown area myself. I want to see the changes, if there's great ideas out there. We don't know the details. You guys know the details. I don't know, have these properties been for sale? Are they for sale? Have they been for sale the last five years? All these properties that are now going to...
You might have to...
You can't hear me? Well, I guess my only thing is to add on to what he's saying. We don't know the details. So when you create these TIFs, I'm hoping they're not properties that have been, people have been just holding all this time, and we tore down buildings, but we collect no taxes on them. Should have filed up the buildings. But if we are now going to start giving out TIF money, knowing, you guys knowing, that this is a group of people that have been open on this property all this time to do this, I would hope you would take that into consideration when you make your vote. We don't know these details. I don't know, I don't live over there, I don't know what's included in it, but I certainly hope you would take that into your consideration when you vote.
Are there any other comments? Is there a report? There's no councilor, or is there someone else?
Yeah, so, so we're at the point now to the board, I think, maybe the mayor had mentioned it in his opening remarks, you're at a point where we can close this public hearing and move on or continue it. It looks like most of the comments been heard. Obviously, we have a large crowd here tonight. I will indicate on your agenda tonight, the first reading for these three items plus the closure of the Main Street South TIFs. I've emailed you all today. I've asked if that be postponed. I think it's, if we want to head tonight, I think we might have some problems with the statute, and again, that was a scheduling snafu on our part. The language of the statute actually says that the ordinances should, you know, should be introduced 14 days after. We haven't adopted. So I think the first reading should come 14 days after, so I've asked you to postpone that. But other than that, you can continue this public hearing. If you want to hear more from any of your staff, continue this conversation, or we can close it and move on to the vote.
Decision's yours.
So in that scenario, is there a motion to close the public hearing or extend it? I'll call it again. Is there a motion to close the public hearing or to extend it?
Motion to extend it.
I'll second that. So, hold on, let me back it up. So you want to continue this public hearing to another date?
Yes, yes.
So people could get more input on their thoughts on it?
Does that require another notice to be published?
We would not, we would not have to renotice it, so we do have to pick a date here, tonight, for the folks in the audience, because you will not get another one of those letters if they, if you do move to extend this public hearing.
It seems like they have questions.
Seventeenth, next board meeting? Yeah, that's fine, but so, and then just a mind, then, no vote on the actual ordinances will not come to 14 days after that. So it extends the process, but again, certainly your prerogative.
Unless it would pass anyways, then it wouldn't matter, would it?
Yeah, whatever you got. Whether you guys vote up or down, you know, I think it's better to wait for 14 days, first week, which is what you guys have always done in the past, or what the board, Tinley Park, has always done. But, so just so you know, if you do want to continue the public hearing, again, so obviously, the village, there's a lot of money to send out all this notice, the statute does not require, so you won't, so folks in the audience and on camera, you will not get another letter, but, you know, so listen closely, and I'm sure it'll be up on the internet, and you'll get a, you know, the regular agenda and things like that posting, but you would not get another letter if you guys choose to continue the public hearing. So we need to pick a date and a time here tonight. So if the motion is to move that, do you want to move it to April?
Is there any suggestions from the staff on the date?
Is there anything specific you guys want? I mean, information-wise?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the most sense would be to do it before the next board meeting. Again, it means you're approving the ordinances till May now, so...
So that's April 17th. What's your date?
April 17th.
It's the board meeting.
Yeah, do you want to do it at 7:00?
Same night?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. So you saw the motion. Trusty Brady, you want to make the motion again? You want to make a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue it until April 17th at 7:00.
That's a public hearing. That's a motion.
It's 7:00 at the time.
Yeah, I prefer 7:00. 7:00. Is there a second?
Is there a motion?
I'll second it.
You want to take the gamble, too?
No, I don't at all. Worst-case scenario, we just run into the next meeting. Do you want to second, Trusty?
So it's going to move and second it for April 17, 2018, 7:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. Do you want to roll?
Call the roll.
Could you call the roll, that'd be clear.
Trusty Panito?
Yes.
Trusty Bird?
Yes.
Trusty Brady?
Yes.
Trusty Glax?
Yes.
Trusty Manion?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, received comments in the public. We got, we got a comment this evening. Motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
Second.
Is there a move in second? Mr. Panito unseconded by...
Brady.
Brady? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take a five-minute break before we begin our next village board meeting. Thank you, everyone.